Um. The Board of Trustees meeting is now called to order at four thirty-four P M. We welcome members of the public. Um, instructions on making public comment are posted uh in item one of the agenda. And we will ask at each item if there is public comment. Catherine, can you please do a roll call?
Um. Trustee Olson. Uh trustee Kishinev.
Here.
Trustee Deluna.
Present.
And trustee Dodd.
Here.
Okay, and absent uh at this time, we have trustee Baker, trustee Iverson, and trustee Rios. And student trustee.
Jorge, Alejandro Martinez.
Alejandro Martinez, that's right, thank you.
Um, and just to note for the record too, that uh I believe trustee Rios and trustee Baker will be joining us at some point. Trustee Iverson's absence is excused uh due to a medical issue. Um, we will move on to the pledge allegiance. Bob, would you indulge us in in leading us in the pledge allegiance?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, we'll move to item two point three, adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes or comments? Um. It seems that I I do have just one, I I'm actually just gonna combine uh item three point one and three point two. Uh which we can do together. Um, and um outside of that, um if there are no other objections, we will adopt the agenda by consensus. And move on to uh what is certainly gonna be the best part of our meeting uh today. Um, where there is uh two actions um before the board. Um, today, the first one is a trustee emeritus. Which is a very, very uh big deal um in the college and provides, if you look at a few different pretty cool benefits. Catherine, why don't you just go over those benefits that uh what a trustee emeritus bestows? I just wanna make sure that this is for trans- public transparency purposes.
Okay, so this comes from. Board policy twenty-eight hundred. Trustee emeritus. Oh, I could use this.
Sorry, I didn't put you.
Um, the Board of Trustees recognizes extraordinary and significant contributions to Napa Valley College. By former trustee Michael Baldini for his twenty years of service and dedication to Napa Valley College. Uh, the Board of Trustees will vote on deciding to honor him by conferring emeritus status. For his lifetime. And that will um, you have served the college for a minimum of three terms. You have served in a leadership role on the Board of Trustees.
Check, check.
You have contributed significantly significantly to the development of the college.
Check.
Uh, you have provided meritorious service in representing the college to its community. And you have demonstrated a continuous commitment to strengthening educational opportunities for local citizens. Um. Conferral of emeritus status entitles trustee to an appropriate listing in the college catalog. The privilege of attending commencement exercises.
With all the regalia, Michael.
A permanent college parking permit and library privileges. Um. While you are not a member of the Board of Trustees, you may be called upon to advise the college in matters deemed appropriate by the board and the superintendent president.
And he has already too. Thank you, Catherine. Uh, tonight, we honor the extraordinary service and and contribution of our former colleague, Michael Baldini. Who served for twenty years, so that's not just three terms, that's five terms. Um, as a member of the the College Board of Trustees. And we would like to welcome uh folks uh in the audience, Deborah, thank you for being here. It's lovely to see you. Um, I know there are other um supporters uh watching uh remotely from uh the DOS Foundation and uh Viticulture and Winery uh Technology. Uh Foundation as well, uh where uh Michael has graciously served for a number of years. Um, as as a responsibility on the board. Um, I certainly can think of um uh Michael's amazing um virtues and and qualities, which made him such a quality board member. But just from my personal experience, you know, two immediately come to mind is is one. You know, I've I've always respect uh respected how Michael carried himself and he's always been, I think, I mean, really a tremendous mentor um to me. Um, something that I've always valued, and I think really all for all new uh incoming trustees, um for somebody that. If his breadth of experience has really just seen it, not just once, but probably twice before. Um. He's he's uh just carried himself incredibly well and in doing so in a fashion not that is demanding or pushing somebody for a certain vote or a certain action in a certain direction. But really talking in a very calm and and cool uh collected fashion. Um, and just raising his experiences, addressing the same issue uh in the past and his experiences. And I think for that kind of context, it's been it's been incredibly helpful, especially um dealing with a lot of the issues that we have dealt with uh here. Um, on the board and the district for the last two years. Um, second, um what immediately comes to mind, and I think a a lot of you will agree with me here, is really um. Embodies this amazing um, you know, to have a successful, I don't know, a career, business, life, or role in the community, Michael always shows up. I think, and when you, when rubber meets the road, a lot of what we do is is, that's what it's all about, is about being there and about showing up. And Michael has always showed up, and he always shows up, whether or not it's a pining ceremony, of course, graduations, um. The occasional academic senate uh meeting. Um, uh, that's a little bit. Um, and Michael has, I mean, he's just there and um. And, you know, going to certain events, and certainly not as many as Michael, uh what's all I've been on uh as a trustee. I can, I know how much that means for folks out in the community, folks here um at the at the college that means. Um, to everyone, and it means everything, I know, from speaking with students, and they really appreciate that. And every single event that I, you know, I I miss, I know I miss, I hear, oh, Michael, thank you so much for going, trustee Dodd, where were you? Um, and I, it was uh happened a few times. So, um, Michael, I know that maybe some other folks do wanna wanna say a few things, but I just wanna let you know how. How grateful I am personally for your leadership and serving um as a wonderful model of of what a a Napa Valley College uh uh district trustee should be. Um, so if there is any other comments, I'd love, if you have any public comment, this is, we do have uh two action um items before it. Catherine, do we have any public comment?
Uh, no, I don't have any public comment for you.
What? We have two votes, but. One of the votes is um a resolution that the board will vote vote up upon uh very shortly. Um, and I'll just um succinctly uh uh cover it. Um. Uh, Michael Baldini served as trustee from two thousand two, from uh two thousand two to two thousand twenty-two. With exemplary dedication and commitment to Napa Valley College students. Michael was exceptional in promoting the college, encouraging the community faculty and staff to ensure that the opportunities of college education. Transfer to university and job skill training were afforded to all. You're here on that. Um, Michael contributed his unique perspective and wisdom to deliberations of the board. And was very influential in moving the college forward through budgetary challenges and ever evolving landscape of higher education. Michael provided wonderful leadership, guidance, and perseverance in the face of many difficult decisions. Uh, Michael stepped up as a leader in two thousand seven and two thousand twelve to serve as board chair and president. And in two thousand six, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand twenty to serve as vice president. As well as various tents on the real property. Uh, a committee at Viticulture and Winery Technology Board, the DOS Board, um including uh uh last year as well. Um, Michael's grace, charm, and leadership skills will were applied generously and appropriately in board meeting discussions. Michael doesn't say it, but Michael is absolutely the consummate gentleman. Um. Michael's quiet humor, gentle words, provided inspiration and guidance for the board to achieve greater levels and thoughtful actions on many key issues. Um, while maintaining a clear focus on student success. Um, now I would welcome a motion for approving this this resolution and also for emeritus status.
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Thank you, trustee Luna.
I'll second it.
Thank you, trustee Olson. All in favor? Hi, hi. Actually, I need Rios to get in this, we're just, we're we're congratulating uh, you know who. Yeah. You may have seen him before, yeah. So, uh, trustee Rios, we, and I, if you'd like to make a a few comments after this. Um, but uh we have uh voting on trustee Baldini's emeritus status. And also uh a a re- resolution that we just uh read off, and we, there is a motion and a second on the table. Though maybe I'll offer it for any discussion on uh. On this motion.
Thank you, um, apologize for being late, but traffic was so great, I thought I'd enjoy it a little longer. The, um, well, I'm I'm happy I I made it. I, um. Now, I don't know how long, I guess I've known Michael for about twelve years or so. Um, he's probably part of the reason I'm here and then uh Bruce Ketron, um. Back when I uh decided to to run for the board, I think he he talked to me with Bruce. Um, and helped convince me. Uh, but there's, I'm sure, I don't know if people have talked about Michael already. I think if you know Michael, he uh, you know what kind of person he is. Um, there's no question how he feels about uh the college and uh the students. And helping the community. I mean, he's got a a huge heart. Um, always looking to do the right thing. Uh, and certainly has done a lot for for the community in general. And a whole lot for the students here at the college. Uh, I think to know Michael is is to be a a friend with Michael. I don't think anybody could meet him and that does not uh become a friend of Michael's at one level or another. He's just that kind of person. Um, when I came on the board, he was, it was kind of reassuring having somebody like Michael who's had so much experience. Knows so much about the uh college and the community. Um, and knowing that, you know, you could go to Michael for something for background. Uh, you could always rely on on his memory of things here at the college, the district. Um, of course, you know, there's so many great things, I I could go on forever. But I do have to mention that that he did let me down on a couple of things while he was on the board. Exactly. He he was gonna take me fishing, and that just never happened, but he may have more time now that he's off the board. So, it may happen. Um, so I uh, I'm so happy to know Michael. I'm uh, the community is lucky to have had him uh for this long. I'm sure he's gonna continue in some way to uh be a part of the community and contribute as he always has done. So, congratulations on on this uh honor.
Thank you, trustee Rios, very much. Great thoughtful words, well, I will uh call for a vote, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? See you now. Uh, Michael, uh, your emeritus status is is well deserved. And I'd like to present you with this uh resolution and a and a gift uh on behalf of uh the board and the college. Yes, you absolutely do.
Well, that's, I'll just start by by saying this. Fine. Next lady. Put up with me for twenty years.
I can capture some of it.
And Michael.
Oh, Raphael, you said all the great things, and I'll certainly go for another twenty years. Thank you very much, John. Everything that they said. And 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 all of you. I I value you and you were the reasons why I did what I did for so long, just great people. With the passion and and the uh, my wife says G S D, get stuff done, that was edited for you. Uh, but but thank you, thank you very much. I I first, um, a little little background, and I know you're supposed to be in closed sessions, I'll make it quick, Raphael. Chairman, uh, thank you very much for your for your words and your leadership, certainly over the last couple of years with COVID. And through the tough times and and um, thank you. The um. But I had gone to ten schools in twelve years. That's quite a few, I knew a lot of principals, no, that's, Mom, you didn't hear that. Um. And the last thing I wanted to do was walk onto another school, and I had a a great job, company truck, I'm seventeen years old, living the life. And we had one of the wettest winters we ever had, and I worked in agriculture, and I got laid off and um. Not a good time, and mom, dad, who had never gone to college, and none of our, of my four brothers, three sisters, had never graduated or anything. Uh, they said, get down to Napa College. I walked on this campus, and I think I signed up for um. For something about technology, and that's the days of the punch cards, as they, I look at at Bob and that back there and things like that, that was, that was computers. But it it uh, it's it started something, probably my professor of English, uh professor lecher. And he tapped into that area where where I never had any success at all, and that was uh English, write it, creative writing. And uh, that was my inspiration to to go on, and and as it does with so many thousands of other people over the years. It started right here at Napa College, and I'm very appreciative to to you carrying on that that baton. And passing it to the next next generation of students. Um, and there's, there's a few things I should let you know as uh in my exit interview as as such. Uh, I remember I had to take a speech class, and and I didn't do very well, I actually had a petition for a grade change. But they said, we want you to talk about something that it's in your life. And I thought, I don't know, is it the thirteen-hundred or fourteen-hundred building right over here where the STEM Center is, and the building's on the right, right around? Um, it's sure retired about. Ten, fifteen years ago, and it was interesting to come here and actually have professors that you learn from still on campus, that was the exciting, exciting part about things. But I I bought my brand new rabbit and drove it over to the classroom and parked it outside in about middle of the speech. Uh, and this was pre uh sergeant, so on and so forth. They asked me to move the car, but the professor said, no, let him finish his speech. And and I thought that was, that was pretty nice. So, the uh. Initially, as I came on the board, there's a lot of learnings, a lot of things to absorb, but one discussion was about the hook ramp here that we used to have right off of. Of uh, the two-twenty-one going south, you come right off the freeway, right into campus and right into the parking lot. And everybody else had to stop, you hope, but uh, so there was discussion about. It's blocking the view, and and I thought, well, great, I'll just borrow Dad's chainsaw, I'm pruning, I went out there myself, and here comes. The uh secretary and the Catherine Kittle of the day, Susan, and uh with another. Police officer wanting to know what I was doing out there. And and what I'm trying to get to is, well, then there was the uh flex day. And um. My cousin and I grew up together, he's one of your constituents, Raphael, he's up in Galveston now, we worked in the vineyards together, if there was a. A way to do things, he would have it done. And uh, so I said, what I wanted, after we worked on for one for him. Um, and he, he liked the idea that I could do it, and he's a professional engineer. And this was um, we had just uh, just voted on bringing uh. Doctor Kraft on board, and it was his first meeting, and I got a phone call at home saying, uh, we have a question for you. Well. Over the uh. The nice people in the Performing Arts Center, they let me in and my cousin, and we put in a, it's still there, it's an eye bolt, it's up near the. The uh control booth, and there's another one on the backside of the stage, we actually put in a zip line. And so, if going forward, if there's a performance of Superman or or another Mary Poppins or something, it's there and it's good. And if you need certification, we have it, so it's all ready to go. Doctor Bell, so if you wanna make your entrance, is it tomorrow, or? I could have it done in in a matter of an hour or so, put that zip line in and flying in like uh. Um, built certainly like that, but you know, the message here is just, just go out and do it, there's there's uh. And and. Make it, make it happen, there's so much assets here, so much to offer our students, and make every decision with with that in mind, it's um. Is it gonna benefit the students? You know, looking at Bubba Camp and all, how many times have we been up there and tried to do something, or even a, you know, when we get the St. Elena campus back, or the athletic fields, and. There's a whole lot of work left to be done, but it was so gratifying to come in and see the construction on the uh. The house, and again, thank you for working towards that ends and um. And thank you for your patience, and this man here has been uh Mr. Pat Burke, he has been showing up, he's one of those. Uh, gentlemen, that that plaque that you're written about, or you walk through this campus and you see this is. Performing Arts Center, this is because someone stepped forward to donate, this man has donated in his time and his effort. In the viticulture for since its inception, right, since uh what, two thousand and seven? Yeah, yes, and and not only that, he's a pretty good chef, so if you need to hone your skills, take one of his Napa Valley College classes or anything like that, but. He's he's stepped forward and and does it. And I don't think there's a paycheck involved with that, maybe a hearty handshake and a glass of wine every once in a while, but thank you very much, and thank you for showing up. Catherine, easily, I guess, that you know that, but thank you again, is there anything I missed, darling, that I I should add to you and? And. I gotta go.
Thank you, thank you, Michael, and thank you, everybody, for being here, I think we're gonna enjoy some cake. Um, uh, after, we'll we'll move into uh quickly for any sort of public comment on closed session items before we do that. And so, do we, do we have any public comment on closed session items, Catherine?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, then we will move into closed session slash uh cake um uh time. Uh, and return, uh, we'll be covering a public employee performance evaluation return at five-thirty P M. On your Brown Act, um by definition, uh this is an opportunity to hear concerns, perspectives, and differing vantage points. The board is not able under the Brown Act to engage in any level of conversation or discussion. Uh, but we look forward to this opportunity to gather community input. The board will devote up to fifteen minutes to review comments uh to the board regarding uh any matter uh not on the agenda. Uh, tonight, um but over which the board has jurisdiction, and we will allow three minutes for each public comment. Catherine, I have not received any public comments, have you?
No public comment.
I do not see any members of the audience interested in speaking tonight, uh so we will move on to consent. Um, any changes to the consent calendar, any questions? Or whatnot, and I will ask Catherine, is there any public comment on our consent items?
No, there is not.
Okay. Then I would welcome a motion for approval. With approval, the consent calendar, thank you, trustee Rios. And trustee Deluna. For the second, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Consent is adopted unanimously, and moving on to item. I'm gonna go out here. Eight, uh, I guess the next item is uh administrative services, uh, action, an action item for thirteen point one, district audit report. Um, let's see, maybe we can do the audit report first, and then we'll uh see if there's any you wanna postpone.
Trustee Dodd, I I would um, I would request that uh we move this to later in the meeting, uh, the auditor is actually online with another institution.
Okay.
And uh, he said he would be available at six fifteen, between six fifteen and six thirty, so. Um, I would politely request that we delay that until uh at least six fifteen.
Okay, yeah, it's not a problem at all, and then maybe just uh give us a nudge uh when 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 they're ready to go.
So, uh, I'll see them join, and we'll just.
Okay, sounds good, I'll just wait for a a nod.
Thank you.
Then uh, is it okay to do a general fund, uh eleven budget update?
Yes. Thank you, Catherine. Uh, let me orient you to this schedule again, I'm sure you're you're better oriented than I am at this point. However, um, let me point out in the upper right corner of the schedule. Uh, right behind my picture, it says six over six. Which tells you that we are halfway through the budget year, we're at fifty percent, six over twelve, excuse me, we're at fifty percent through the budget year. Now, the budget isn't split exactly in half, so what we do is we compare to uh our expenditures. Uh, at this point last year in terms of percentages, and if you look at the right column, it'll show you where we are. Yeah, with respect to expenditures as compared to the very, this very time last year. I would point out just a few areas uh under the revenue side. You can see that our property taxes are the largest contributor to our la- our lag in revenues. Um, that doesn't mean we're not getting them, that means that we continue to uh, they continue to be delayed from the county. We did receive a a nice tranche of of revenue in December. Uh, however, we're still significantly behind where we should be in terms of revenue. Um, for this time as compared to last year. Uh, we are in touch with the county offices to determine um what they're doing. Uh, but we're in the same boat as as the school districts who also manages those funds. Uh, we do earn interest on these funds, so it's not as though they're 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 gaining and we're losing, but we need them for certainly um for our needs. We do not have a cash flow problem because uh our, the the funds we receive for variety purposes, including categoricals, have arrived. Uh, from from the uh, from the chancellor's office and from the state. Uh, and we uh, so from a cash flow perspective, we're still doing fine. But we would like to see the revenues from the county arrive uh fairly soon, so if you know anyone at the county, you can call, please do so. If I can just call your attention to the expense side, we'll scroll down the right column. You'll notice that we're we're in pretty good shape in in almost every category. Our total salaries under the expenditures, far right column, we're at about forty-six percent as compared to right at fifty percent last year. Salaries and benefits are eighty-five percent of our budget, so these are the drivers in our budget. The next main line down under employee benefits, scroll down a bit there, Catherine. We're at about forty-five percent, thank you, trustee Olson, if you could read those off for me. We're at about forty-five percent as compared to fifty-two percent last year. Um, just as a baseline comparison, we we uh, and the audit will show this. If you're asking, oh, well, you're comparing to last year, but how did we do last year? We did well last year in terms of our expenditures over revenue, so you can, you can have some confidence in knowing that. That it wasn't a bad year last year that we're comparing to, it was actually a good year, a baseline good year. So, the the only other area I would draw your attention to unless you'd like to discuss further is, uh, just scroll down a little bit under. Little more. Our capital outlay, our capital outlay law is still looking at 113% of budget. Much of this is due to timing. We had investments on the front end. We still need to do some adjustments to other funds there. And that's why we're looking at 113% of our budget. Under total expenditures, total expenditures, the blue line, if you will, and the, and the percentages, move over one more column to the right. There you go. We're at 47% of our expenditures compared to last year. So we're still trending in a good place. Our expenditures are about $1.5 million less than they were at this point last year. So we're trending in a positive direction. The only concern, and I would say it's a minor concern at this point, is just the time their revenues arrive. So we'll continue to, to encourage the county to, to open their checkbooks. So that would conclude my report on Fund 11 for General, our unrestricted operating fund. I'll certainly entertain questions.
Go ahead. Trustee Baker.
I was just curious about the staffing, since again, that's our big chunk. The classified temporary, is it the only one that's like really that different, I think, from previous year? I got 28% to 54%. I was just wondering if you have an idea what, what's driving that? And if it's something that's of concern? And the other question I had was, these other ones that are a little bit lower than in previous years, is that due to vacancies? Or is it just because we over budgeted?
Well, they're, they're due to both, both issues. The, the classified temporary, those are TEAs. I'd have to take a closer look and see exactly what's happening there. So Trustee Baker, I don't have a specific answer to that question, but I will get that to you. The other dynamic that's occurring here in terms of under, underfunding our two. Number one, we have some open positions that are funded in the budget that have not been filled. So that is, that's a plus and a minus. It's a plus financially. It can be a minus if we're not delivering services in some areas. The other, the other issue you brought up is this budget is based on a projection of preview, the three previous years, and we generally added 8% as a cost of, a cost of doing business increase. So if it hasn't been, if it hasn't improved by 8%, then we're to the good. And, and if it hasn't gone over that, of course, it's, it'll cost us more. But we are trending more positively now. We don't have many positions that are funded and unfilled, but we do have, we do have, I'm gonna say four to six, maybe, maybe even fewer than that. But those numbers obviously add up pretty quickly when you, when you put together both salaries and benefits. I'll research the temporary classified and circle back with a response to that.
I had a question. Are there any grant funded positions that are not filled right now that we need?
There are requests to fill grant funded positions. Those are actually in Fund 12, which are restricted funds. But there are some unfilled grant, grant positions.
A question on my end regarding cash flow. If, if the county doesn't get us a check, you know, when, when do you think we should be concerned? And I guess maybe a related question on cash flow. You'd mentioned that we do have cash flow reserve, but it sounds like that was more cash for kind of Fund 12 accounts? Or do you separate those two? Or how do you, how do you parse those out?
We have cash in our accounts with the county.
What, what's that? Sorry?
We have cash in our accounts with the county. They are for a variety of purposes. But the county allows us to utilize those in the short term for cash flow purposes. So from that perspective, we are, we are fine. When those, when those revenues arrive, it, it all writes itself effectively in the accounting.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. Making the clock with five to six, we will move to appointments to board committees. And so I have talked with a few of you. Sorry if I didn't get around to everybody. But for audit and finance was proposing Trustee Baker, a Trustee Kishinev, and Trustee Deluna. And I think this is my appointment or whatever, but if you guys don't, if you have any comments or objections or so on, let me know now, right? So.
I would rather not do the audit and finance.
Well, the only reason I thought is, so I had done it, I hadn't done it in my previous term. I just think it's important for you to, I think it's important for every trustee to go through that process and do it through the year, just to have that exposure. And I think Trustee Baker's leadership over the last year, two years, actually, I think, or just last year, yeah, year. I think you're being good hands in terms of, you know, what to be looking at. But it's a good exercise that actually, I almost kind of think it should be a requirement for every single trustee. So if you don't, if you feel like a time, a time issue or whatnot, you know, maybe we can. Yeah. I think we, we have met, I think, in the last years in terms of time. No, yeah, no more than four times a year. I think it was probably three. Okay?
Still no. I, I, I guess budget just isn't a big learning point for me, I guess. I, I know budgets really well, and I've worked extensively and I'm on other budget committees and other, on other boards that I'm on.
That's why you would be so good then.
Yeah, I mean, I, just as far as the learning side of it, I don't feel that I need it as much. But are there other board appointments that will be changing?
Why don't we move on to real property? And maybe we can revisit audit and finance. Real property is Trustee Rios, Trustee Olson, and Trustee Iverson, and student trustee Alejandro Martinez for McPherson Distinguished Teaching Award, which is a relatively low commit. Trustee Olson, I thought you, I kind of had you and, and Trustee Kishinev. I just think for both of you, it's just a nice opportunity to, to interact with, with our staff and faculty. So I think it's a nice exposure. So actually, to that end, for Dr. Schenk Award, I pointed you, a Trustee Kishinev to, for, for that award. And I believe the commitment is relatively low on that. You had two meetings, and they're typically towards the end of the, in the early spring. Yeah, and it's, it's a fun thing to do, yeah.
I'm not worried about, I was really glad to hear my name on the Audit and Finance Committee. That is the one committee that I really did want to be on. So thank you.
Yeah. So, okay, that's where we're at on that. Audit and Finance. Okay, so Trustee Deluna does not want to do Audit and Finance. So we will pick the odd man out here, which is the trustee that's not here. And that shall be a trustee. Well, there's some other committees coming up. Trustee Baker, yeah. There's also other responsibilities here that's going on.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, good, good, good question. And I think that's a, just for a comment for Trustee Kishinev and Trustee Olson's benefit. We did formally have a Legislative Affairs Committee just going over really state legislative pieces that were, that was happening at the Capitol primarily in Sacramento. And we decided really just to disband that and kind of go through, you know, doing those updates here at the, at the board level and as opposed to kind of, I didn't think it was the best use of staff resources to go ahead and do it. And I think now with where we don't have our, our kind of legislative liaison, Holly Dawson, here at the college anymore, I think it makes even more sense to continue to have that, that committee on standby. And to the extent I think that there is any sort of real pressing state legislation that we're made aware of, that we would just call an ad hoc committee and, and figure out how to address, dress up.
I get a lot of legislative updates through the C C C T as well, so I can be that voice there too if something comes up.
Okay. Yes. Yes. And, okay, and then we actually have to do three votes for DOS, viticulture and winery technology and foundation board. So maybe I'll just go, maybe combine this if you think it's efficient enough. Yeah, we're supposed to, I think we're supposed to, at least I have it online. Okay. Okay. Well, so I, that doesn't, because there's a, yeah. So for our DOS board, I had previously had Trustee Iverson listed there, but I will appoint Trustee Deluna to the DOS board. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go. Viticulture and winery technology foundation board. Trustee, I didn't have, if anybody wants, Trustee Rios, I just thought with your exposure to, to wine and grape growing, I just thought you'd be a valuable add. I know you're, you're, you're already on, on real property right now.
I will. I'd be happy to serve on that. Real property, we, we don't have a meeting every month.
Yeah. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Trustee Rios for that. And then I was gonna nominate myself for foundation board. Any?
One second.
Thank you. I'll do that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. See? Told you I'm doing something. Okay. So moving, yeah.
We now have the auditor.
Oh, perfect timing. Great. So we will revert back to item 13.1, which is an action item. We'll take the report, and then after the report, we'll, we'll take public comment.
Report from the committee?
Yeah, I think maybe if we could have our auditor go first, or Jim go first, and then maybe Trustee Rios, maybe you can add just for any sort of clarification or corrections or, or whatnot. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yeah, I think that's what Mr. Reeves had in mind, have the auditor give us the quick report and then his comments, and then the committee recommendation.
Mr. Reeves, you want to kick us off? If that sounds good to you.
Thank you, Trustee Rios, Trustee Dodd. As a reminder, the Board of Trustees retains an independent audit, audit firm to determine if the district's financial statements fairly and accurately represent the district's financial position. The audit report for, for the institution reflects compliance in addition to financial status. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Ben Levitt with our audit firm CWDL to give us a high level overview of, of the three audits. There are three audits that we'll take a look at. And, and with respect to the audit committee's work, they have had a detailed look at, at these audits at last Friday. So if you'll allow me to turn it over to Mr. Levitt, please, Ben.
Absolutely. Thank you, VP Reeves. And good evening, members of the board. My pleasure to be with you tonight to speak to the results of the audits as of fiscal '22. As has been mentioned, I had the chance to go over these reports in detail with the committee this past Friday. So I'll, I'll spare you those details. I'll go through them at a higher level in this meeting. But do not hesitate to stop me at any point if any member of the board would like for me to go more in detail as to any of the documents or any of our procedures as performed throughout the year. I just want to make one comment prior to jumping in that I am very pleased to be able to give this presentation here in January, and also to be able to say that these reports were submitted timely to the Chancellor's Office. As of fiscal '22, we are back on the December 31st traditional deadline as apart from the, the past few years. And many of your peers are in a position where they are not yet completed with their audits and needing to request extensions. That's not the case here at NAPA. And I want to express our appreciation to district management for putting us in a position where we were able to obtain all the records that we needed. And it's many, many records across virtually every department to be able to conclude our work and bring these results to you this evening. So with that, I'm going to speak to the main audit reports contained within each of the documents. And for the district audit, that consists of four separate reports. The first one appearing on page number one. So as we flip to page number one, we see the independent auditor's report. That is our chief work product in the district audit. In this report, we opine on the fairness of the presentation of the overall district financials. And our opinion appears right at the, the first page of this, this report as the second paragraph down from the top of page one. And we are able to provide an unmodified opinion for fiscal '22. An unmodified opinion is the highest quality opinion that an auditor can render and is to say, based upon the results of our testing, these financial statements can absolutely be relied upon by the district's governing board, the district, and all of Napa Valley's stakeholders. And so moving past that, kind of going through the body of the document, the other auditor's report section begins all the way back on page number 68. And so that is the start of the next three auditor's reports contained within the, the overall financial audit. That report on page 68 is what's called our yellow book opinion. That concerns our testing over internal controls and controls over compliance. Had we noted an exception to controls, such as a breakdown in the district's internal controls, we would note that exception in this section of the report. Very pleased to report for fiscal '22, we note no such exceptions to Napa Valley's control environment. And so an entirely clean yellow book opinion on page 68 for fiscal '22. Moving past that report, onto the next required section of testing on page 70. Page 70 concerns our single audit, which is our federal testing. And for purposes of fiscal '22, federal testing was primarily focused not only on the student financial aid cluster, but also on the very significant source of funding coming from the HERF program at the Federal Care Act level. And based around this testing, had any exception been noted to any of the major programs we were required to look at during the year, we would note that exception to federal compliance in this portion of the report. We note no exceptions to federal compliance as of June 30, '22. And so an entirely clean single audit. And the final section of our testing appears on page 73. These are the procedures spelled out on page 75, a couple pages into the state compliance report that are dictated by the Chancellor's Office. This is probably the most technical section in terms of the, the breadth and the detail of the procedures that we are required to test to. And we note sections 411 through 499 as all the procedures spelled out by the Chancellor's Office's updated Contract District Audit Manual, or C DAM, for this testing year. We do note one exception to state compliance, which we detail further in the Findings in Question Cost section of the report, which I'll speak to immediately following this report. But other than that one section pertaining to failure to comply with the 50% law, we note no exception deviations from any, any of the other required testing areas under state compliance. And so with that, I will move on to speak to the one lone exception noted as a significant deficiency during the fiscal '22 audit year. And that's going to appear in the very next section of the report in the Schedule of Findings in Question Costs. And when we scroll to page 79, we'll see that finding detailed out as finding number 2022001. This will be familiar to the board as this is a repeat finding coming out of fiscal '21. Essentially, what this comment is noting is that the district fell below the required 50% threshold for all, for the current expense of education to essentially include 50% of expenditures relating to salaries. relating to salaries of classroom instructors and related uh classroom uh instruction. And we note that the uh the percentage has fallen below that now for this second year uh requiring for us to note this item as a significant deficiency um in the report. And in the corrective action plan identified on the bottom of page seventy nine, district management uh provides an explanation and some perspective on the comment as well as a path forward. Um, and it's our hope and expectation that going into uh fiscal twenty three and forward, the district will work to uh try to bring up this ratio of the required salaries of classroom instructors uh to step into compliance with the fifty percent law, uh so long as this law is on the books. There are many uh fellow districts challenging the validity of the fifty percent law. There's many good arguments uh against this law being kind of the best fit for the California Community College District System. Uh, but at this time, since this is uh the current law, uh, an exception to this threshold does unfortunately constitute a significant deficiency, and we note that on uh page seventy nine is finding twenty twenty two zero zero one. The very final section of the report uh concerns prior comments, which is always a good section to look at to get some perspective on year-over-year change and any exceptions noted by the audit. And so going on to the very next page, on page eighty, uh, we see finding twenty twenty one zero zero one as a finding notated in the prior year uh concerning the SCFF data management control environment. This finding centered around the fact that during the prior fiscal year, the district did not have a documented plan in place uh over the control environment. There were uh plans and procedures identified, but uh they were not documented in the fashion required by the chancellor's office. Uh, we note that finding as resolved and implemented in fiscal twenty two, and we are able to reflect that at the bottom of page eighty in the status section of that finding. And the final part of this report, um, or at least the finding section, uh, page eighty one uh shows the fiscal twenty one comment regarding the fifty percent law uh showing the first year of that concern noted uh where the district stepped below that fifty percent threshold of the current expense of education being dictated by uh salaries of classroom instructors. And so um I want to pause there just for a moment before going on to the very final section of the report, uh just to check in with the board to see if there's any questions uh relating to any part of this document um or any aspect of the results of the audit, uh including the the finding noted in the current and the prior years. All right. And hearing none, I'll go on to the very next section of the report. Um, I'm pretty excited about this final section just because uh we see it at our firm is a really good improvement uh to the the format of the prior audits. This was a change that was requested and ultimately delivered upon by district management. Starting on page eighty three, this is not required information is presented here uh in a supplementary fashion um to provide all of the district's operating funds. Uh, you'll note that the core financials in the audit report uh show the district's financial statements in uh a a format that is modified to include long-term activity. But governmental fund accounting uh does not include long-term activity and in fact does not include many of the adjustments that go into getting the funds uh to their presentation as required by governmental accounting standards. And so here, starting on page eighty three, the district shows its funds really in the exact same format um as the uh the fiscal services department would be looking at the the funds uh in in terms of all their decision-making. So on page eighty three, we see the balance sheet of all the district's funds, chief among them, the general fund unrestricted at the far left-hand side of that page. And then on page eighty four, we see all the activities concerning those funds, the statements of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. We feel that's a really great improvement uh to the um usability of the financials to enable not only the board uh but also community members to be able to really see uh into um in a more transparent fashion the district's financial records. And in addition to that, on page eighty five, the very last page of the report, uh, we note a new schedule also not required, presented as supplementary information by management uh for the first time in fiscal twenty two that provides a budget to actual for that most critical fund, the unrestricted general fund. And so we can see uh in the final, in the far left-hand column on page eighty five, the final adopted budget as of June thirty twenty two in the center column, the actuals for the unrestricted general fund. And then the variances between the two in the form of budget to actuals. So for instance, we can see looking at total revenues uh that for fiscal twenty two, total revenues fell below uh budgeted revenues by one point four five eight million dollars. Uh, but along those same lines, total expenditures also fell below budgeted expenditures by two point oh two eight million dollars, resulting in an excess of revenues over expenditures relative to the budget of five hundred and sixty nine thousand ninety nine dollars. And after accounting for other financing sources, um, that generates a positive impact uh to fund balance relative to budgeted fund balance of four hundred and one uh thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars. We feel this is a helpful schedule presented by management uh to show um for the unrestricted general fund exactly how that fund has done at the snapshot date of June thirty twenty two relative to the final adopted budget. And uh and that concludes the uh the district's audit report. Uh, before moving on to the other audit audit reports, I just want to pause for a moment to see if there's any questions uh relating to any aspect of this document or any of our procedures over the district audit.
Ben, if I could just comment on this very last schedule uh at the audit committee meeting, i- if you look at if you have some experience with uh with financial note, most of us will recognize if it's in parentheses, it's a negative number. In this case, i- it it's not reflected exactly that way. So fund balance at the end of the year, you'll notice uh in twenty uh twenty one was three point eight eight four million dollars. And in the end of twenty two, it was four point four one one million dollars. So it increased by an amount equal to five twenty six, five eleven. So we have, I spoke with Ben and he actually delivered that revised schedule, so it's a little easier to read uh than just looking at um looking at numbers in parentheses. There's no red ink here, folks. It's just the way that the orientation of the accounting. And we have uh we have made those changes.
That's a really, really good point to note. Um, so members of the audit committee will remember our discussion on the orientation with the variances being based around uh the budget rather than the actuals column. And coming out of that conversation, it really felt like we were all on the same page, that the most straightforward way to present it would be um, just as Jim indicated, uh, showing a a positive number where there's been effectively a positive change and a negative number where things have gone uh the wrong way, or or at least um, you know, against the favor of the the ending balance. Uh, and so we uh we see here a decrease in revenues reflected as a negative, um, a decrease in expenditures reflected as a negative and an increase in that ending fund balance relative to the budget reflected as a positive, uh, which we hope will make the statements even more usable uh than that original version presented to the audit committee. All the same numbers like Jim mentioned, just uh changing uh that convention uh for the way that the variance column displays.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. And thank you, Jim, for uh being in there, too. Any uh comments or or questions?
The um, none.
Okay.
All right.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much for uh uh jumping in, Mr. Levitt. And um I did also want to thank uh you, Jim, for all of your uh work on this and getting text messages like on the day after Christmas and weekends and making sure that we got this to the chancellor's office. Uh, even though albeit maybe in draft form, but on 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 time and um in in really good shape. So I appreciate uh the diligence and attention to detail and and uh and Mr. Levitt, I'm sure you're uh actively involved in that in that process as well. So thank you for your efforts.
It's our pleasure. No, it was a really smooth process thanks to uh really, really good uh district administration on all the points.
Well, this is an action item. Um, so um, actually, before we jump on that, Catherine, do we have any uh public comment?
No, we do not.
And I've not received any either. Um, so I would welcome a motion uh to approve.
I will. If I could interject for a second.
You shook your head when I uh asked if you want to ask any comments or questions. That was your.
Comments. This is the committee's uh job to.
Excuse me, just excuse me. Of course, trustee Rios.
So you just heard the the highlights from from Ben, which he did a very good job of covering all the the high points. Um, well, when we heard this and we asked a few questions at the uh the committee, it was the uh committee's recommendation, the board accept the um auditors of this audit uh as presented.
Thank you very much, trustee Rios.
Um, and also I did I did want to add to, I I enjoyed seeing. Thank you for the extra work on including those extra details. That was going to be the one question I was going to ask is, you know, what is different in this uh audit, you know, compared with with years past? So that was what I mentioned uh about attention to detail and those those extra pieces. I know that the audit and finance committee were were asking about um you know, to address uh certain omissions or things that would have been nice to have in previous years. So uh, I would at this time uh welcome a motion for approval.
Move approval? Thank you, trustee Rios.
I'll second that. Okay.
Let me go trustee Baker. I heard you first just because she's closer to me. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Audit is accepted, approved, and submitted. Thank you again, Mr. Levitt.
Trustee Dodd, uh, we'll need to take a formal action on the other two audits uh from the foundation and and DAS.
Okay.
So Ben, um, i- it sounds like uh uh you're on for just a few more minutes.
Absolutely. Which uh which should we start with between uh DAS and VWT?
Let's go with DAS.
Sounds good. DAS is going to be a much shorter document. Uh, again, I'll I'll speak to it at a high level. And then don't hesitate uh to stop me along the way with any questions. Uh, the DAS report begins on page number one with our independent auditor's report, which uh for the exact same purposes it served in the district audit, uh, this is where we opine on the fairness of the presentation of the DAS financials. And as can be seen in the second paragraph down from the top of the first page, uh, we are able to express an unmodified opinion over the DAS financials, which is the highest quality opinion an auditor can render and is to say, based on the results of our testing for fiscal twenty two, the DAS financials can absolutely be relied upon um by the board, the district, and all of the district's stakeholders. And then going through the DAS audit, um, the main sections that we'll note are the uh core financials beginning on page three. Uh, the notes to the financials beginning on page eight and uh and and concluding on page thirteen. And based upon the uh standards in place over uh the the auxiliary entity DAS, um, there are no additional auditor's reports. The only auditor's report contained in within within the document is our independent uh audit report over the fairness of the presentation of the financials. So um that uh that kind of sums up the DAS audit. Uh, but if there's any questions, if there's any aspect of the report uh that any member of the board would like for me to cover in more detail, um, I'd be happy to do so. So I'll I'll pause there before jumping into VWT uh just to see if there's any question uh relating to this audit report.
Any questions?
I do not see any.
All right. And then uh jumping right into.
Can we stop for a second and excuse me, uh, Ben? I think we should take action on this.
I I'm happy to do it. We can do it all together unless there is.
Well, I think we were it's probably best that we do it separately, the approvals.
If that's what you want to do, that's why let's just do.
Jim, did you have any other comment on this?
I have no further comment. However, I would agree uh with uh with trustee Rios that that for the public record, we we likely need to act uh on each individual audit.
Okay. I'd just point out that um the uh dashboard had voted and accepted the audit um, you know, on their on their end. So it was uh after hearing the presentation, it was the committee's uh recommendation again that the board accept the uh audit.
Thank you, trustee Rios. Are there any other questions or comments on this? Catherine, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
On the gas? Well, I would uh welcome a motion for approval.
Move approval?
Thank you, trustee Rios and trustee Baker for your second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed?
None.
Approved unanimously. Uh, we'll go on to uh viticulture uh and winery foundation.
Sounds good. VWT as the final report starts on page one with our independent auditor's report where um, as the board knows, we express our opinion on the fairness of presentation of the overall VWT financials. Uh, and as can be seen in the opinion paragraph, which is the second paragraph down from the top of page number one, uh, we are able to express an unmodified opinion over VWT's financials as of June thirty twenty two. Um, that is the highest quality opinion that we are able to express and is to say that these financials can be relied upon by all of the VWT stakeholders. And very similar to the presentation of DAS, uh, the VWT core appears on page number three. And the notes to the VWT audit report appear on page number eight, providing additional detail on the balances contained within the VWT core. And uh also similar to DAS, there are no additional auditor's reports contained within this document. So I'll I'll stop right there and uh just check in to see if any member of the board has any questions uh concerning the VWT financials or any of our procedures uh as performed on VWT for fiscal twenty two.
I don't see any questions. Uh, trustee Rios, do you want to provide an update from audit and finance?
Jim, any additional comments?
No additional comments from staff.
This, the uh committee also uh after after reviewing this and uh noting that the uh VWT board has also accepted this audit recommends that the board accept the audit.
Thank you, trustee Rios. Catherine, do we have any uh public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, then, we're back at that time again. Thank you, trustee Rios. And trustee.
I'll second.
Thank you.
For your second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Uh, any opposed? Uh, this audit is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
If I could, trustee Dodd, extend a thanks to the audit and finance committee. This was uh uh an interesting year and and that we uh we tried to fit this in before twelve thirty one. And and so I appreciate their patience in working with us. We did meet all of our compliance requirements. Uh, so I thank you. I'd like to also publicly thank the finance team led by Wendy Nuccio and our finance folks who worked uh did some extraordinary uh work to get this to where it is. So I'd like to thank them publicly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves, for saying that. And please express our our gratitude as well if we didn't express that already. Um, we will move to our reports. Oh, Catherine is shaking her head. What did I miss, Catherine?
We have only uh one present, and that is here in the room, and he has posted his.
He did. I saw it was a very nice PowerPoint slides.
Thank you.
Do we have those? Should we uh put those up?
You bring that up? Great. President Dodd, members of the board, um, happy new year and happy new semester. Uh, this month, I would like to take a slightly different direction with my report. Uh, next page, please. Uh, in the last month, there has been a lot of buzz in the media about ChatGPT, an artificial intelligence program that can write cogent essays, solve science and math problems, and produce working computer code. I asked it this weekend to write my monthly report. Next page. Um, and this is what it produced. Next page. Dear Board of Trustees, I'm writing to provide an update on the administrative activities for the start of the spring semester. Enrollment for the spring semester has been strong with the total number of blank students currently enrolled in classes. We've also seen an increase on the number of online and hybrid. We've also seen an increase on the number of online and hybrid classes offered in response to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. We have implemented strict protocols to ensure the safety of our students, faculty and staff. The facilities department has been working diligently to prepare our campus for the spring semester. They have completed several projects, including the installation of hand sanitizer stations and the upgrade of some of the classroom facilities. And classroom technologies, excuse me. We've also continued to focus our efforts to support student success and retention. We've implemented several new programs, including a peer mentoring program and a series of workshops on academic success strategies. Overall, we are off to a strong start for the spring semester. We will continue to monitor the situation with the pandemic and make any necessary adjustments to ensure the safety and well-being of our community. As you can see, the AI has perfected the art of preparing a nice sounding report that provides you with virtually no information. It even provided a shorter version as a haiku. Next page. Hires made, policy has changed, student needs met, progress made, spring semester thrives. More troublingly, I also asked it to write a short essay about federalism. And it produced a response that would have earned a B minus in my intro to American Government class. Next page. This is the sort of thing that keeps administrators awake at night. For example, faculty worrying about AI-written homework and exams, although there's now software for AI detector programs, including one Turnitin, which we use at this campus that can provide pledges and flags. We may however need to rethink assessment, bringing more students to campus for in-person proctored exams. Yet, our testing services are limited the moment to only DSP students because of budgetary and staffing constraints. Our own Flora via a chatbot called Stormy was not particularly successful. However, artificial intelligence may provide unheated benefits. It could automate many routine transactions with students and admissions and records and the business audience. It could help English language learners improve their skills and perhaps tutor students in many subjects. Yet, our network infrastructure is weak, our classroom computing power is outdated, we have little expertise in this area. And I think that the campus would agree that we are not yet ready for technological revolutions. I am not a lead it, but one must wonder if the future will be AI-generated reports that eliminate the needs for teens, faculty or even trustees. These are the kinds of issues that administration, staff and faculty must consider together as we look to the future. As ChatGPT would express about the future of artificial intelligence, next page, in haiku form, AI and education grows, online classes personalized, learning for our students. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
That is our only report?
Yes.
Well, what was the name of that program?
It's called ChatGPT and it's at openai.org.
Thanks for that. No, no. But now.
You're going to write your report for, when we get to the trustee report, you can actually do it on your phone right now, Jason.
What did New York do?
They banned it and.
What is it?
There are faculty across the college, across the country who use this technology in their classrooms. So for example, in the English class, to have the AI write an outline and do a first draft of that outline and then the students turn in that outline and the first draft and then they work on it and they show their modifications to that, what the artificial intelligence produced. So it is not all bad. Like any other technology, it is a tool, but it is one that rapidly moves. And this is stuff that just came out last month. So it is something that we need to keep our eye on.
Was it that, because I saw your, that's what I read of your post on Facebook, which you had, the South Carolina professor? Is that kind of how it really came about as a big issue in academia?
Yeah, it is. Well, once the OpenAI folks released it in November, I think it started getting attention at a lot of places where students are starting to use it to turn in work. But also instructors are starting to use it as well for other purposes.
I was just going to ask, what are benefits that we know so far for educators?
So, as you said, so for example, you can use it to help students with English language learners. For example, may benefit from having that kind of real-time chat sort of function based upon use of language. So there are some benefits. The ability to automate transactions may be very helpful. Students who have routine inquiries. If you could ask it, how many sections of English one twenty are available on Monday, Wednesday, you know, and get that answer in real time? Those are the kinds of things that could be very, very helpful for us and could ultimately save us money so we could redirect resources in other ways.
And then what do the detectors entail and would that require us to purchase software?
So that moves very quickly as well. The first one that came out was written by a Princeton student. And then this week, turnitin.com announced that they have an AI detector software. And that's a service that we use. So that's incorporated automatically into the service that we use connected to Canvas.
Thank you, Bob. So that is our only constituent report. Okay. We will go to our president and cabinet reports then.
Which are not written by artificial intelligence, as far as I know.
You never, you never know unless it goes through.
This evening, and vice as academic affairs, I have no formal report other than to let you all know that trending in our enrollments for this semester, we are about six percent down based in comparison to last, last spring. We have made some good improvement in the last, in the last week, once the holidays concluded. And we are moving some courses late start, giving folks time to register. So we'll see. But we did hit a nice little bump and we've plateaued. So right now, we have three thousand five hundred and forty-one individual students enrolled for a total of nine thousand four hundred and twenty-two enrollments. Then that puts us at six point six two percent less than last spring at this time on this date. So hopefully we will be bumping up a bit. We do have some late start classes. We do have some, some moving and switching that we'll be doing over the next couple of weeks. As, as we'll see where it goes. Census date is February sixth for our traditional courses. So we'll see where we go. And so at next board meeting, we'll have more updates for you. One other point is that as we've transitioned to self-service, so you may heard in our student software and interface with faculty, we still may have a bit of a challenge collecting positive attendance numbers. And just the other day, Dean Van der Velde and did his, his area. I went through the health occupation that we garnered a hundred and fifty-three FTS that were not captured in the fall as of yet. And we have not done the audit yet on the career education workforce development. So the healthcare areas and career education are the areas where we captured many FTS and positive attendance. So there's been a learning curve with transition to a new process as well as a few glitches. But we're on it. The deans and I were on it to capture this to give true reflections of where we are. So next month, we'll have some numbers for you that will be a little bit more definitive.
Hey, so I think I'm up. So good evening, we're trustees and community. Happy New Year to all of you and hoping you all had a wonderful three-day weekend and a great Martin Luther King Junior Day, so Day of Service. So just a couple of general updates to begin, kind of, again, piggyback off VP Harris's numbers. The Student Affairs is working collectively to onboard new students through admissions and records, Welcome Center, Financial Aid Counseling. We've been really busy the last, last few days, last couple of weeks to really work towards bringing new students on to campus and successfully getting them enrolled. There are a couple of glitches that we have to be experienced through IT that we are working to navigate through. But with all that said, it's really been the entire staff coming together in Student Affairs, especially around Welcome Center Counseling to overcome barriers. So I really do appreciate staff from other departments, from counseling specifically, who've stepped in to help out the Welcome Center and really from that perspective of the team. So I lift it up to them and many thanks to everybody involved in that really, really important work. Moving on to community outreach, the Student Affairs Department, we're working really closely with Outreach Task Force to identify key activities this semester to target outreach specifically to our Upper Valley and our American Canyon areas. We want to make sure we attend to the needs of our community. With that said, we are working towards developing what we're calling Napa Valley College Exploration Days. This will target our local high schools as well as our Upper Valley and American Canyon schools. The goal will be to increase the number of students coming to Napa Valley College by bringing them to, literally. So getting buses and bringing them to NBC so they can learn about all of our programs we have to offer. Ultimately, and really the goal is to also connect them with staff, connect them with staff and services. Because we know that the research is clear that students will succeed if there's a connection. So building that connection, that bridge to our schools is really important for us. And really the tour of campus, the experience of the community college system and learning what options they have, we really think is going to make an impact for our students. And then by the end of that day, hopefully they would have done a step or two in the enrollment process. So they walk away, leave our campus with something done. So I'm moving closer to really being a student here at NBC. So that, we're planning the date for that. And when we have those dates, we will let you know. Hopefully you can join us. Student Affairs Council, the Student Affairs Council, which consists of Student Affairs Managers and Administrators, we met late last week to really start speaking and talking about our goals for the semester. We're prioritizing, what came up in that meeting is the prioritization of really this idea of strengthening our communication in student affairs. So we are on the same team, working together to serve our students and community. Ultimately, that teamwork, that increased communication among programs, among managers, among staff, impacted when we serve students, right? So working together to really offer really good experiences to our students is what the council will identify. With that said, really a focus also on ultra-responsive and equity-minded training for all of our student fair staff. So that is, that is a goal that we wish to complete this semester. And we're going to continue to refine these as we meet, as we, as we work with our students. In my last update, and I'd like to invite you, and I have a flyer here, actually, if you don't mind, I click him on the flyer there to our Reviva Mariachi Festival coming up. Yes, our third annual Reviva Mariachi Festival, April first. We will have two shows, one at three o'clock, one at seven o'clock. We have mariachi groups, actually we have a middle school mariachi group coming from Las Vegas, award-winning. We have a group from Santa Rosa who will be joining us, as well as people from ECLA. The ECLA group is actually the first group in higher education to come together and organize mariachi. So very excited to have them here. This is a collaboration not only with our Student Affairs folks, with DAS, also our music department and folks are really making sure that we work collectively to impact our community from a cultural perspective, but also learn about our programs and what NBC has to offer. So we're very excited about that. Hopefully you can join us. That concludes my report.
What is the cost?
Cost is going to be fifteen dollars a ticket.
And what kind of sponsorship opportunities are you looking for?
Oh, all kinds.
Okay.
Yeah, so in my report, if you'd like to sponsor or help us out, I'd love to talk to you more about that.
Sounds good. Tell all your friends.
Yes, please tell your friends, get the word out.
Yes, I bring all my teams. I pay for that.
Yeah.
I think it's my turn. Trustee Olson and I have a friendly wager about what time we'll finish tonight. So my report will be extraordinarily brief. I would just refer you to my posted report and just give you a little bit of an update on the housing project, which we see out there and we referenced earlier. We are a little bit behind on schedule due to the rains. We do anticipate some pouring of concrete in the next several days. So that's the big mile marker for us. And we'll provide a more complete report on progress there at a future meeting. So in my desire to win this bet, I'm going to sign off. Thank you.
So, okay. But actually, I did want to know, was there any, other than just delaying things? Was there any problem with the storms?
No, no, I can say no with confidence now, just the delays and what's caused by the rain. They're concerned that if it gets too wet, that the forms won't hold, so they're reinforcing the forms. We were ahead of schedule prior to the rains. We're a bit behind now. And as soon as we pour the forms, that's a significant milestone. We'll begin to solve for opening on time and where we are at the pouring of the foundation in terms of overtime, in terms of bringing crews on on Saturday, et cetera. So I think after those foundations are poured, that's a significant milestone that allows us to judge where we can go from there.
Well, I guess it's my turn and since I didn't get in on that wager, I'm going to talk very slow. Good evening, Happy New Year and welcome back, everyone. We just completed the first round of interviews for Assistant Superintendent Vice President of Academic Affairs. We will be holding second interviews as well as campus forums on Monday, January the twenty-third and Tuesday, January the twenty-fourth. This will be based on conversations held today, will be held in the PAC. We're making arrangements for that. And also, Trustee Baker, you asked last month, will this be streamed? We're making arrangements for that as well. The Assistant Superintendent Vice President of Student Affairs, that will be posted this week. Also next month, as a reminder, we're coming to the close of receiving our SERP applications. The SERP applications, the SERP is our Early Retirement Assentive. Applications are due in our office via DocuSign, January the twenty-seventh of this month. Next month, we will be bringing a recommendation based on the amount of applications we receive at that time. And look forward to having future discussions with you next month on that. And you all, thank you very much for your time.
To charge some, you know, PAC is obviously a very nice place to meet, but I always get concerned when we're, maybe I'll take a step back. I think this room is totally suited with, if there's going to be remote streaming and I don't know if there's going to be online participation, but it just seems so, everything is all, go ahead, Bob, please.
If I could chime in on that, one, our plan is to have the upper part of the house closed off with stanchions so that it will direct people into the lower part and in the center, which makes for a little bit more of an intimate venue.
And I guess that was my, it was really more on the technological side. Like if we are going to be doing streaming, I've just, what was the one forum that we had? It was a great forum, but as someone who is participating remotely and that's just the challenges of doing it, right? But it was like those folks couldn't hear anything for the first twenty minutes. I would just hate to have something to go through that process. And I just look at the investment that we've put into this room and would love to start using more, but you guys make the decisions and, but just wanted to offer that.
No, I really appreciate that. And actually, that's what I offered earlier, but the idea came in for the PAC. So we immediately started having conversations with Matt to confirm that they are able to zoom in on the candidates and making sure, one, that it can be heard very clearly, but also be seen very clearly.
Let me provide some context as to the why. We had this conversation and discussion today, actually. And in today's forum, in the Flex Day Forum, we did pilot the, the hybrid format with people there live and with the streaming in the pack. And reports coming back that that, that that was sufficient, that worked well. Both parties were there. Honestly, the feedback came from my perspective as a candidate about a year ago, being, you know, having an interesting experience where, you know, we're physically bringing people on campus for interviews and yet not doing a forum and not having the chance to interact physically with, with, you know, potential of the candidates engaging with the community in a live format and environment. So if we do, as we approach the date, encounter, you know, some complications with technical difficulties as we lead up to it, then, you know, we can pivot and shift. It's, it's much easier to pivot it to, you know, an online-only experience than to, you know, kind of shift back to something online.
It wasn't, it wasn't anything about doing, anytime you have an online component, I just think the risk of doing it outside, the risk of potential issues occurring are much higher when it's done outside of this room. It seems to be the case to me, and I bet if you did a survey of all the different remote events, where you've had issues and where you haven't, that, that's just my two cents. So that's, that's all it is.
And again, if it's looking as if that's going to create a problem for the tech.
And again, if, if it's looking as if that's going to create a problem from a technical difficulty perspective, we can.
The point was, but did you think there was going to be a technical problem, uh, at the, at the community forum that, that you guys were hosting? So.
Yeah. And I think also the original plan, when we did the interviews for your position was to have an in-person and something went weird. And so that's why it ended up being only virtual. So I don't know if, like to Jeff's point, would it be possible to do a hybrid in here? And then just have people in, you know, in the seats back here rather than, I mean, but if it works at the PAC, do it.
Well, duly noted. And the most important thing is that candidates have the chance to, to share their ideas and broadcast. And if, if, if the pivot here, shift here makes more sense, then, you know, we'll touch bases and figure out from a technological perspective, what the best uh, strategy flow will be. So. Well, it always gives me anxiety anytime we do something hybrid, whether it's here, anywhere on campus, because it's a less controlled environment. Uh, but it has mitigated the best, uh, in this room at present. So, uh, point well taken, uh, trustee die. Uh, I just have two quick updates. Uh, the first is, uh, we, I got the chance last week to visit uh, Sonoma State with both, uh, both interim VP Reeves and Dr. G to discuss potential partnerships with Sonoma State. Very excited, uh, at the initial conversations that came out of that. Uh, we did meet with their interim president. We met with some of their executive staff and members uh, from an oper- uh, operational perspective to discuss, uh, potential partnerships, including a formal two plus two pathway, which would create guaranteed pathways for our students into their programs. Uh, they are a program that is not impacted with the exception of, I believe it was two instructional programs that, uh, were the exclusion of impaction, which is great, three programs, thank you, which is great for, uh, for our students and for us because uh, the impaction rate at a lot of the CSUs is significantly higher. So the fact that they have the spaces to accommodate our students and are so interested in, uh, establishing formal pathways is very exciting. So uh, Dr. G is spearheading those efforts and more to come, uh, with what that partnership can look like soon. And the other update is just today was Flex Day. And as I mentioned before, we had, uh, I had the chance to, to meet with the, uh, the campus, to talk with them, share some thoughts about, uh, what our goals and objectives for this semester will be. Uh, really focused a lot on the importance of building community and establishing that as, uh, really a benchmark to assess and uh, really achieve a lot of the other goals that we have to lay out. So, uh, I think it went well. Feedback from the campus has been, I'm very positive so far. So I think we're ready to start this spring semester and, uh, some exciting things on the, on the horizon. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Uh, we will, um, pass on, uh, or move to a standing committee and other appointment reports and pass on DAS and Invita Culture and Winery Foundation report as well as Audit and Finance, as well as Real Property Committee. Um, I assume the same for the, um, the remaining three items now that I just go through that list. So, uh, seeing no objections, uh, Jim was liking where this is headed. Uh, we'll move to trustee.
Wait, 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 wait. I had eight o'clock in the pool, so I printed out twenty pages on War and Peace. So if I can just, no, I'm just kidding.
Thank you for your filibuster. Uh, uh, our student trustee is not here, um, today, but I will move from my right, starting with you, trustee, trustee Kishinev, hopefully not, uh, War and Peace, but, uh, you're up.
Um, I have nothing to report.
Uh, trustee Rios.
Nothing to report, Jim.
Wait a minute.
Trustee Baker.
I was trying to think of something, but sorry, I have nothing to report.
Trustee, trustee Delena.
No, it's just another reminder, we'll be in Sacramento in two weeks, I think, um, for our annual conference, the new trustees. And I'm looking forward to it. Hope everybody joins us and there should be a reception as well for new trustees.
Wonderful.
I'll make sure to let you and Jason and everybody can go, but I'll make sure that you and Jason both know about it.
Thank you.
Trustee Olson.
Um, I just have, uh, something to share. I am helping plan the sixth annual Napa Valley Black History Month celebration. Um, a good friend of mine, JT Thompson, is the founder of the celebration and I started helping him at the second annual event. Um, by involving youth and young adults locally in the conversations that we're having as a county about, um, local and historical, um, black, or black, local and historical black community. And so, um, I just wanted to share that the event will be this year on February eleventh from two to five in the afternoon at Crosswalk Community Church. And I'm really hoping because of the focus on, um, diversity at our community college, that we can really involve the college this year, particularly the Emoja community. So I already talked to Dr. G before the meeting about connecting with, um, with that lead of the Emoja, um, group and really ask, you know, finding out from them if they want to be involved and how we, we have, um, some, a few people that are already slated to speak. Um, we want to have like a young adult panel this year. The theme for the two thousand twenty-three Black History Month nationally is Black Resistance. So, um, I will share more. I just created a Facebook event today and invited some of you who are on Facebook, but I'll share more on the ticket link in the next week or so.
Thank you, trustee Olson. Um, I have nothing to report either, except for I did skip, uh, item seventeen point three, future agenda item request. And I will do a survey to my left and the right, and I see trustee Baker with her hand up.
Just a thought, um, that it would be, uh, I think a good idea for us to review our polit- policy, I guess, or a direction on building of the reserve. Um, cause the, looking at the first off, the fifty percent law and that we're inching closer to something that is supposed to be fifty percent. But in order to do that, we have to make significant changes. And then looking at, even though we added five hundred thousand to the reserve this year, that's barely five percent of the total that we would actually need. Um, and then we've actually increased our expenses by five point four percent. So that's just not sustainable. We've had that discussion before that even when you have a healthy reserve, if you don't continually add to it, it's eventually going to diminish just because our expenses go up faster than our income. So I just thought it would be good. It's been a few years since we've even looked at it. So it would be, could you do that?
I would say that I'm in favor of doing that too.
Okay. Um, Dr. Powell and Mr. Reese, maybe you guys could huddle, um, at some point. Um, uh, when, you know, might be a good opportunity to do, I don't think there's any expectations and that, that this would happen next month or not even maybe the, the following months, but, uh, just to have it, yeah, track it on the radar and I think it's a good idea too. Thank you. Okay. Well, um, that is the end of our show tonight and we will adjourn at, uh, six fifty-nine. Yeah.